Good morning, it's 10 o'clock. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item up for business is the approval of the agenda. I received a letter from the Buffalo Red Watershed to my home in regards to the MOU for the One Watershed One Plan. I'd like to pull that and move that between two and three, in between right after the bid opening, so if you could do that. And also, we do have an agenda addition to consider approval of contracting for engineering services for the diversion technical advisory committee, not to exceed $15,000, so I'd like to put that between five and six.
We'll approve the agenda with the changes?
We have a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next thing is we have our employee recognitions. Alright, so today we are recognizing Cindy Erins for 20 years of service to our social services department. Thank you very much. I think that she's unable to be here, but Rhonda, if you'd please say a word or two about her, please.
So Cindy has been with our agency for 20 years. She started out working in child protection, child welfare, working with elementary kids for truancy intervention. Currently, she's working in our disability unit, working with folks who have disabilities, helping them to remain in the community and in their homes and get services. So she's been an amazing employee for us for 20 years, and I will congratulate her.
The next person is Melissa Bodenheimer, with 15 years of service to Clay County as well. Rhonda?
Yes, she is all sick today. She got flu, like everybody else, so... Melissa works in our child support division and has worked there for the past 15 years. So she works really hard to secure child support payments for kids that reside in our community, and to assure that their life needs are met, and she does an amazing job. One of the things we most appreciate, Melissa, is her sense of humor, so she lends that to the unit and to the agency overall, so we appreciate her.
Thank you. Express our appreciation. Our next person that we'll honor today is Michael Trigg, with 15 years of dedicated service. Mike, do you want to come up? We're really honoring you today.
Thank you so much for 15 years of dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens.
Lieutenant Emthing?
Mike has been with us, obviously now, for 15 years. He came to us before that. He worked for the Moorhead Police Department for 14 years, and the Mandan Police Department prior to that. Since Mike's been with us, he's been in the patrol division, working the street, pushing a car around the entire time. He has enjoyed it. He's done very well at that. He has also spent a lot of times at community picnics, enjoying all the food there. As our crime prevention officer, he's also been our subject matter expert for our New World and EPS system. And finally, he's done very well over the years as a field training officer, so he's been training in newly hired deputies, and been able to steal a lot of knowledge that he has to those new hires. So we truly appreciate your years of service here, Mike. He does retire here at the end of the month, so this is kind of bittersweet for him, I believe. So, Mike, thank you for all the years of service. We truly appreciate it. You've been a great addition to the sheriff's office.
Thank you. Now Sergeant Schroder and Sheriff Burquist, if you'd please come up to present our lifesaving award.
Thank you, Commission, for allowing us this time to do this. I'm here to read a nomination letter that I put in for Deputy Trigg in regards to saving a life. At 1:35 PM on January 8th, 2018, Deputy Mike Trigg was dispatched to assist Holly Chief Joe Backland in the city of Holly for medical assist. The call was in regards to a female that had swallowed a bunch of pills and was being reported as suicidal. Chief Backland canceled Deputy Trigg prior to his arrival. Deputy Trigg was close, so he continued to the call location anyway to see if he could assist. While Deputy Trigg was inside the residence speaking with the victim, Chief Backland went back to Holly Police Department to get some paperwork. The victim, a 19-year-old female, collapsed after an agonal breath. She stopped breathing and had no pulse. Deputy Trigg immediately went into action and moved the female to the floor with the help of a member from Holly Hurt. Deputy Trigg immediately began chest compressions and relayed to Chief Backland that CPR was now in progress. Chief Backland went back to the residence and held the female's head up so she had an airway. Deputy Trigg continued chest compressions. Three separate times, he rolled her to her side and patted her on her back to attempt to get her to take a breath. After the third attempt, he continued chest compressions and could feel a heartbeat. The female began to breathe on her own, and her pulse was regained. FM ambulance also arrived on scene and administered Narcan. The female regained a safe level of oxygen in her blood, and her pressure was stable. Key factors which Deputy Trigg accomplished to obtain this success was his responding to the call even when canceled, and staying with the victim. The proper assessment of the victim's condition, quick observation of her immediate lack of breathing, and loss of heartbeat, and the correct application of cardiopulmonary resuscitation. Above all, the most important factor in this incident was Deputy Trigg and others on scene working together to achieve the common goal of helping someone in need of emergency assistance. On a more personal note, an emotional note, the mother of the victim gave Deputy Trigg a tear-filled, tear-filled hug and thanked him for saving her daughter's life. I was there to personally see that. I mean, it was very emotional, and as Lieutenant Emthing had mentioned, with Mike being one of the field training officers at our sheriff's office, he also trained me and was one of my favorites by far. So it was my proud honor to nominate him for this award. I think he did a fantastic job.
We're honored to have you serving Clay County. Move into the portion of the meeting where citizens are allowed to speak on any item that may not be on the agenda. Are there any citizens who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Shall move.
With a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the minutes in front of us for the January 16th meeting and January 23rd meeting.
We'll go approve.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll move into our bid opening for the Correctional Facility and Law Enforcement Center furniture package. Brian Berg and Danielle Reed from Clay McCarthy, welcome.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Yeah, we're here today to open the bids of another long process that is hopefully coming to the first step of its fruition, to open the bids and see where they come in, and we'll take a week to evaluate them and come back for approval of this. So with that, you do have a sheet in front of you. This is going to be by categories, and Danielle has listed the different entities that are possibly submitting the bids today, and we have, if you'd want to describe it in detail, maybe a little bit as to why there's more categories and things like that.
Sure.
And Danielle has worked very hard on this with us in getting this together. It's been a lot of work. When you look at two buildings and the different offices and the different types of furnitures and the workstations and the chairs and the meeting rooms and all that, she's done an awful lot of work to put this together.
During design, it was imperative that we looked at the design of the furniture to ensure we had all of the offices and all the doors located properly. So yeah, like Brian mentioned, we've been working on this for quite some time. The goal of separating the bid categories was to be able to ensure that we were able to get competitive bids for each portion of the furniture. So category A is just the chairs, so it's called seating. Category B are just the tables, the conference tables. Category C are the workstations, so the modular panels and the work surfaces in the majority of the offices. Category D is the office furniture in the sheriff's office and the chief's office. It was a different basis of design, so we broke that out. Category E, our reinstallation of existing furniture. We were able to identify a significant bit of furniture that we were able to relocate, but that meant that we needed to have someone provide labor and a few parts and pieces to make it work in the new configuration. And category F is a miscellaneous category that includes a handful of lateral files and things that just didn't quite fit in those other categories.
Thank you. Is there estimates that you've put together for each category?
Not for each category. We do have a total. We weren't able to break it out at that point in time.
Do you want to share with us what that is before we go through?
Yeah, the total is 465,000.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any way, it's really hard to hear about here.
The sound?
Yeah.
Okay, if you would please speak more into the microphone, please, and maybe, thank you, Darren.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think what they do is they turn it down for the audience.
Yep, he's going to work on it.
And if you'll bear with us on this, this isn't just opening the package and reading one figure for all of it, so it's going to be a lot of items to read. So do you want to start with the online one first?
Yes, we did receive an online bid. We had previously discussed that it was an option that the vendor would be able to take. So the vendor, we received bids online through email, was from the Alternative Business Furniture Group, and they submitted a bid for, bid category A for seating, for a lump sum total of 82,379.98. They submitted two submissions for bid category C. One is refurbished furniture, so it's reusing existing. That bid was a total of 201,139.24. And the other bid for category C was 233,391.54.
Okay, Madam Chair, that were both in category Cs?
Yes.
And there was two bids?
One was for...
Because one was a refurbished one?
The first one was the refurbished.
Okay, thank you. Just clarification.
And the bid category D, the lump sum total is 13,512.26. And they also submitted two bids for category E.
Okay.
The one for the refurbished totaled 6,645.62. And the other for bid category E was 7,104.92.
Okay. Now, sorry, keep going.
For bid category F, they submitted a lump sum total of 14,821.73.
Now, I get that we've got more coming, but just, are the bid bonds present on all?
They have, yes, presented.
And then the addendum acknowledgement, one through five?
Yes.
It's just that this is an area on our sheet, so I just didn't have it for sure. So everything has got there.
Yes, they included everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next bid we will open is from Hannah Hurst. And the bid bond is acknowledged. The listing of the products is acknowledged. Lump sum total listed as 87,577.56. And category A is an alternate bid for seating. For a total of 85,663.62.
Okay, does it identify what the alternative is?
The alternative is...
Which category?
For that...
Oh, for seating, it appears to be... A different basis of design for the manufacturer.
Thank you.
And this is category E? Category F?
A total of 17,831.55.
Thank you.
How much was that again?
17,831.55.
Yes. Okay, the next proposal we will open is from Cooper's.
Excuse me, did they not bid on E at all?
They did not.
And just for clarity again, the reason why there's so many categories too, that some people may handle a certain line and they feel they're competitive in one, and we wanted the most competitive bid that we could possibly get. Bits are in here.
The bond is the first one.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, yep, the bond.
So the bond is acknowledged.
Who is this?
All addendums are acknowledged. And the product listing is included.
The... I'm sorry, can you please move the microphone a little closer?
Yes.
We have some people that submitted bids that can't hear us.
This is category A. Category B. And thank you for your patience in going through this, but...
No, it's important.
Category B, a total of 25,122.90. And we had opened up category C, because I believe that's D.
This is D.
Okay. So lump sum total for category C is proposed 216,368.29.
And this is D.
Category D, a total of 14,596.20.
And, or at F?
And the next bid we will be opening is from Brown in Sanger. Bid bond acknowledged.
And the, I don't know if this is acknowledging the addendums.
Yeah, addendums are acknowledged. And product listing is included. Category A, a total of 91,279.54. And the next bid we'll be opening is from Riordan's. Is there a bond? There we go. Okay, bid bond acknowledged. And, oh, the addendum is acknowledged. And they provided a listing of the products.
Thank you.
Bid category A is a total of 74,061.0. Bid category D, 14,092.0. Bid category E, 8,950.0.
Thank you. Is that everything?
Yes.
I think that's everything, Madam Chair.
Well, just for quick estimation, we're at least $150,000 under what your estimate is.
I believe so.
So that is always good to see the bids coming that way. How were you wanting us, do you want to individually go through these and approve them, or is make them contingent on review?
We would like, Madam Chair, we'd like to review these, compile them, recheck the numbers, make sure the product is what we wanted, and then we'll come back to you. We're hoping next week for approval.
To the board's approval? Good, thank you. A good set of...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we'll move quickly into that MOU that we had changed from consent agenda. Commissioner Campbell had wanted to just place it on so we could have any discussion if needed.
Yeah, I, you know, I just brought up the, I'm not one that likes to see an MOU just be on a consent agenda. I just think it should be something that allows opportunity to be discussed. I know we've talked about this several times at previous board meetings, but I just, I just thought it needed to be voted on separately, and that's why I asked for it removed.
No problem. Any other discussion?
So I would, you know, based on the previous discussion regarding the One Watershed One Plan, I'd move forward, I would move that we move forward with the signing of the memorandum of understanding.
Of a motion of approval and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, I'll get that to the watershed. Now we'll move into our annual department update from the Law Enforcement Center. We have Sheriff Burquist, Chief Deputy Seero, Administrator Savat, and Lieutenant Crane. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I thought we would do a quick update. I know you wanted to talk about fees, so we'll wait till the end to discuss some fees.
Thank you.
So wow, what a crazy year. A lot of building going on, obviously with the support of this board and the public. By the summer, we should have a brand-new Law Enforcement Center correctional facility, and we are looking forward to that. Calls, 2017, we saw just under 12,000 calls. That includes calls for service and self-initiated activity. That's up about 300 more from the year before. As you may remember, we assisted the city of Moorhead with some overtime help. For the summer, they were short. That total was 353 hours, so we were happy to do that. I think they were happy to have help from our agency as well. The transport division, boy, we are really waiting for this new correction facility to open. Right now, we average a little over 12,000 miles a month, and that's split between four full-time people and a roster of available hour deputies. So our staff are on the road an incredible amount of time. A lot of that having to do with the jail overcrowding, so we are very, very eager for that new correction facility to open. As you saw... As you saw today with the Life Saving Award, we continue to battle the opiate crisis in our community, just like they are in the rest of the country. We were active members of the Lake Street River Task Force. We have two of our deputies assigned to that task force along with Moorhead. We work in conjunction with Wilken County and Breckenridge, and they're busy, very busy, and there is no shortage of work in that battle. And we're going to continue to fight that until we find some solution. We have seen some improvement in that, just like in the gang war. It takes a community to fight something like this, and, you know, I think the hospitals are on board. They're changing their prescription med routine. So we're starting to see some improvement in that now that the whole community is involved. So we're looking forward to continuing to solve that problem. As part of our old system with two, with their jail and our old jail and our sheriff's office in one building, we were confirming warrants for many, many years after hours when jail staff would just run downstairs to our warrant division. So now with the, with the building of two separate buildings, we had to devise a way to, to solve that issue that we were going to have. We didn't want correctional staff running across the parking lot on nights like we've had the last few nights trying to confirm a warrant. So thankfully, the state, working with the state of Minnesota, we're allowed to do electronic warrant confirmations. So we no longer house paper warrants on our facility. That was a great leap forward getting into the twentieth century. And we, we were happy to work with the courts and, and solve that. And finally, it hasn't hit the newspaper lately, but this summer and the last few years previously, a lot of shootings in the country involving police officers. The Minnesota Post Board has now mandated training. We all have a three-year license cycle. They've mandated training starting in twenty-eighteen to deal with crisis intervention, conflict resolution, and cultural diversity. So going forward, we're going to see all police officers in Minnesota go into that training. And the Post Board legislator gave them a lot of money that will hopefully pass down to our department and every others to help support that training for us. So we're looking forward to that kind of training. It's going to be sixteen hours every three years for each one of us. So I can say that we've always done well in a rural environment dealing on, on those three topics. Maybe not so much in a large metro area, but I think in this area, we've, we've always done very well in those. So does anybody have any questions on the law enforcement piece? Yes, you can. Okay, I think we'll move on to the correctional facility.
Great, thank you.
Big year for, for the new correctional facility. We're hoping to open that the first week of September. We have a jail transition that's been actively working for well, well over a year. They made great strides. I'm very confident they're on, on schedule with their plans. They are currently working on training manuals and finishing a policy procedure. So they've been very busy, and they're, they're key to our success when we move into our new facility. Couple of things we got going on that are new for this year. We have expanded our housing options out in the state of Minnesota due to overcrowding. We now currently utilize Wilken County, Douglas County, Candy, Ohio County, Crow Wing County, and Wright County for overcrowding problems. So we literally have them all in the state of Minnesota. We are averaging, for two thousand seventeen, we averaged over sixty-six inmates out of county every day. And in custody in Clay County, we averaged sixty-five. So we're running easily around a hundred and thirty for overall population. We project when we move into our new facility, that we'll be running about one forty. A couple of other things we have going on is Clay County Jail Ministries has continued their services in the jail. And when we moved to our new facility, they have offered to provide us at low cost additional programming for our inmates. So we're pretty excited about that as, as well as they are. So we'll be seeing a lot more programming in two thousand eighteen as well as in two thousand nineteen when we have some of our program space actually open in the facility. The correctional facility will need to hire some new full-time employees. The Department of Corrections has stayed with fifteen full-timers, but the county board has also agreed to hire a full-time RAP officer for a total of sixteen. A plan for hiring will be brought to the board in the near future. Some other areas that we have going on is our behavioral health unit in our new facility. That will be an eighteen-bed unit. It's called Behavioral Health Unit, but we've called it Maple, as you all know. We have named our cell blocks in our new facility after the local rivers. So we will have a Red River Pod. We will have a Wild Rice Pod, Cheyenne, Maple, and then Buffalo East and Buffalo West. So that's a kind of a unique situation we have here. We just thought it was an opportunity to go away from the military named cell pods. We're really focusing on this facility, programming, 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 so that our inmates, when they leave here, they leave here with some better tools to deal with their daily life. Maybe help them with finding jobs, treatment programs, mental health appointments, things like that. So we are cutting down recidivism and really trying for reintegration. So behavioral health is a big, big plus we have, and the Clay County should be really proud of themselves. This board has been amazing for supporting us in this whole venture. People across the US are looking at how we're going to handle the situation in this pod. It's unique. And I'm really optimistic that we will be successful. Social Services has really stepped up and come up with some great plans for mental health caseworkers, programming ideas, and just overall how we can operate this, this, this unit within the main facility. So pretty exciting stuff that we have coming in the fall. And again, this is a two-phase project, so the second phase of the jail will be completed in twenty-nineteen. And that will include office space, program space, kitchen, and laundry. So we won't be completely ready to, to fully, be fully operational this September, but by May of twenty-nineteen, we should be ready to go.
Good. Thanks. Julie, does anyone have a question?
I've always heard of July opening day. What is that? Probably the one-month training. Is that we're still going to one-month training or something?
Yeah. The plan is that the facility should be open so that we can get in there mid-July to start our training. There may be punch items that still need to be done, but jail staff can get in there and start training. One of the things we have to remember is that we have to hire a bunch of staff. They have to be training the old facility as well as the new facility. Because for us to train our existing staff in that new facility, I have to have somebody running that old jail. So we need to hire everybody. Everybody has to go through it. It's a couple of week training. And we need to make sure our staff are completely comfortable in that new environment because it's completely different to what we have, we have right now. So we feel we need six weeks in that facility before we bring our inmates in there so that we're completely confident, fully trained, and ready to hit the ground running when we move them all over.
Any other questions? Lieutenant Green.
Okay. Not quite exciting is opening a new jail, but a little about last year, of course, we had the disaster in northwest part of Clay County. And it was a state disaster. And of course, again, it was the first time that we used the utility companies as a, basically, if they had damages, we could use their, their damages too. So that went off pretty well, and the utility companies were really tickled to death, I'll say. It helped them out a lot. Some of the other things, last year, applied for a county hazard mitigation grant. And this year, hopefully, we'll get that grant. Again, it's every five years we have to redo our hazard mitigation grant. So that will be coming down the road. In March, we've got a damage assessment team coming and train a lot of different people in Clay County, including the city of Moorhead, how to do damage assessments in case we ever have a disaster again. Hopefully not. Our armor, kind of updates on that. We're pretty much at the, the final phase. All our EMS, our fire, and police are all on the armor system. Dispatch just completed the MC seven-five-hundred project, which was their update to the armor system. Now what we have left is basically decommission all our towers and all the stuff that we have out in the county. So we'll put a plan together and get started with that, and we'll play up to have that completed by the summer. Our teen cert, we finished our, I'm sorry, our adult cert. We completed that last February, March, last March. We've used them a couple of times in our exercise, again, the city employees and county employees, and again, with the support, went off pretty well, and they sure enjoyed it. And hopefully, we'll be able to use them in a lot more things. First responders, again, we're doing a lot of training, SkyWarn, NIMs classes, pipeline safety. Been busy with this valley expansion project, which is the gas pipeline from Felton over to Cass County. Had several meetings, and we're basically are kind of preparing for the worst, and hopefully, nothing will happen. Another big exercise which is going on, started on Monday and will finish on Friday, it's the complex coordinated terrorist attack. For Fargo-Moorhead, we had a hundred and fifty people there on Monday. Brian was over there. We had to keep them awake, but it went pretty well. It's, it's a big exercise. It's going on pretty well. It's basically to get together all Fargo-Moorhead people that even, you know, the, the top administration down to the low man on the pole and pole. So it's been a good exercise, but continue. Again, this summer, with our new armor system, we're planning on having a big communication exercise. Again, I'd be just our local EMS and fire employees. Questions?
Any questions for Brian? Good. You guys are doing a lot of stuff. Thank you for your collaboration specifically with the new expansion that we're doing. You're running a good ship, Sheriff. Thank you.
Well, these are probably the three hardest workers you ever see. You don't see them much. They work hard.
I'd just say, Sheriff, it's easy, isn't it, when you have professional competent staff like that? So thank you guys for what you do. Appreciate it.
Did I tell you about the fees a little bit?
Yes, you have. This is the document that was provided by the county administrator. I don't know if you have it, but.
You know, we got it earlier in the conversation, but I've got a copy.
Okay. I'm not going to go through every line by line. Most of that document is our civil process fees that we hand out like this. So you're talking about levies and executions, writs of recovery, that kind of thing. This was last brought to the board last January of seventeen. We try to bring it to the board every few years. We, we're constantly dealing with other counties, so we have an, an understanding of what they're charging. And sometimes we hear back from clients from us that say, boy, you're, you're really low on this, or you're really high. So we keep a pretty good eye on this. Some of the things we do with civil process is very manpower-heavy, so that we charge for that. So I don't know if anybody had a specific question, but if you see some of those things that are, that look somewhat expensive, like a hundred and ten dollar fee, they're, they involve a lot of staff time, computing, interest, and, and that kind of thing.
And I think that was our comment, one, to make sure that we're frequently looking at it, to make sure it's applicable. But specifically, if it's taking a lot of staff time, that you're covering whatever that expense would be.
Correct.
Any questions for you?
It looks like most of your fees are set by the state, though.
They, they are. We have a little bit of a control over them when you come to talk about staff time, obviously, but they are. And then we don't charge any fees for domestic abuse orders, no matter who, which county or state they're from. So those are all free. We do those, obvi, for, obviously, for, for nothing. And then move on to the other fees that we charge for the sheriff's office. We have a impound lot. That thing grows. I mean, every time we move it, probably in the last five, seven years, we double it, and it's amazing how fast it fills up. The last time we moved it was in, I want to say about two thousand and ten, maybe, two thousand and eleven, we doubled it. We put a seventy thousand dollar security system in that. In conjunction with Moorhead, that's another great thing that we collaborate on with the city of Moorhead. So we, again, we changed that last January. We had been at five dollars a day storage and a ten-dollar admin fee once. So now we moved that last January to twenty-dollar admin fee and ten-dollar a day storage. Those funds help us to maintain that and buy new equipment for it. And again, we don't, we don't charge for stolen vehicle, that kind of thing, if somebody is unfortunate to have a vehicle in there for that reason. And finally, the last fee that we really charge with the sheriff's office is, we call it our extra work, so wedding dances, escorts on large equipment moves, that kind of thing. Quite a few years ago, the chiefs and the sheriffs got together, and they wanted one similar rate. You know, we're, we work together. We're just separated by a river, and it was agreed upon at forty dollars an hour. It's time for us to change that. We don't know what we're going to do with this. I know some agencies do the direct cost. The problem with that is most of the communities around here that have, with community centers, will only rent out to their residents. I can't tell somebody when a newlywed couple is going to get married, how much security is going to cost, because I don't know who's going to work it. And the range could be very large, you know, if a sergeant worked it versus not. I'm kind of opposed to that because it could be a couple hundred dollars difference. You know, it could be as low as two hundred dollars, as high as three, four hundred dollars. So we have to work through that and figure out what we're going to do. But most of those agencies now have gone by their, gone and done whatever they wanted to do instead of a nice combined, agreed-upon amount. So does anybody have any questions on the sheriff's office fees? The only other, Brian doesn't really charge anything, but Julie's correctional staff, they have a few fees that they charge for.
Yeah, we do have a few fees, not a lot of them. Couple of others are, we got from statutes of Minnesota, being a booking fee. The booking fee just charges, anybody comes into the jail, processing fee. We don't charge for court processes or DOC holds or things like that, but we do charge twenty bucks. Twenty dollars is a standard fee across the state of Minnesota. One nice thing we have with our current money system, if somebody doesn't have the money when they come in, if they come in, again, not year, the next year, if they have a debt, we get our money. So it's very helpful with this new system we have. So we've been collecting a little bit more booking fees, well, all of our fees actually, because if they have a debt, they don't have the money. We get it eventually. Work release fee, again, that's twenty dollars a day, and that's for any inmate that goes on work into the community at their regular job. Work release is a privilege that we offer here. It's not a rate, so it's something that we can charge for. The second one is a UA fee. We do charge fifteen dollars, and that really applies to all people on work release or STS or any kind of program we have go outside. We need to make sure that not any substances are not supposed to be on so that they're safe in the environment. So we do charge a fifteen-dollar book, UA fee for those. Fingerprints, that's strictly for the public. So if the public needs fingerprints for teaching licenses, any kind of license across, not just Minnesota, North Dakota. We offer specific times for them to come in and get their fingerprints, and we do charge fifteen dollars. And that's basically just for the staff time. And the last thing is our medical fee. Medical fees are, by statute, we can charge five dollars for a doctor visit or nurse visit. However, we cannot charge for mental health visits, which we don't. And again, it's five bucks, and that's pretty much standard for the state of Minnesota. We really have increased our fees a lot in the last couple of years. Our UA fee, we did increase last year just because we were running a little low. But overall, these are pretty standard across the state of Minnesota. We're not asking anything higher or really lower than anybody else, so.
And we're quite aware with what boarding costs are. Fees are at other counties, so maybe we'll be able to set, set a level now that we'll have a larger jail, and maybe we could recruit some of that.
I think we will be able to get some of those counties that have helped us out if they have a case where they have somebody who lives locally. And I get a lot of those requests right now. We just don't have the space for them, so.
Julie, could you go over that again? You said something about mental fees not being charged.
Yeah, we don't, we don't charge for mental health visits. For example, if we have somebody who needs to see one of our mental health providers, we don't charge them any money for that. But if they were to see a doctor or a nurse, then it's a five-dollar fee.
Which is part of the reason why we were so excited when we secured that grant from Lakeland, because that will really help to offset the cost of having that mental health practitioner present.
And we, we want our inmates to feel that they can talk to a provider, and if they think they're going to get charged for it, they're less apt to go in and ask for that help. So it really helps us in the long run if we don't charge a fee for that.
Any other questions? Brian?
Well, are they all done?
Are you done? Yeah, I think they're.
I do, I do have something to confess to the sheriff that I may have made a mistake. I know that'll surprise you, but. Lieutenant Green sent me a certificate this week that in nineteen eighty-nine, when he was with the Fargo Police Department, that I had verified his law enforcement credentials. And I think I may have made a mistake.
That she didn't know how qualified he was. All these years later, we've benefited from it, so.
I was just getting even a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, did you say you do executions?
Well, in light of fees, Dara, if you don't mind, can we address an agenda addition quickly before? I see that John is here. I assume that you're here in regards to the agenda addition. Okay. In front of us, we do have a, a consideration to approve contracting and engineering services for the diversion technical advisory committee, not to exceed five, fifteen thousand dollars. Brian, you can present this.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. This is something that came about as a result.
This is something that came about as a result of a diversion meeting and frankly, as a result of the task force and then the advisory board, and the discussion centered around a request to have an additional engineer on the TAG, which is the technical advisory group. And after an hour, one hour of discussion at least, it really was kind of in a stalemate, and Commissioner Campbell spoke up, and I think correctly, I support his suggestion 150% that Clay County would handle the fees of an advisory engineer and not to exceed, of course, because this thing has to move along fairly fast. You heard this morning again, that they want a conclusion within four to six weeks. In order to do that, the groups, I don't want to say necessarily one group over another, but they wanted to see another view from an engineering service. And we're suggesting that, and the conversation was, that Charlie Anderson has been engaged in this, is up to date on some variable options and things, and there was a discussion and agreement, I'll say, that Clay County, who does not have a representative on the TAG group, Fargo, Cass County, Moherhead do, and we don't, that we would fund up to $15,000 for the advice there. So, long discussion, but that was rammed into just a couple of minutes and...
Commissioner Whelan?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve up to the $15,000, assuming that the technical group works that out and they're accepting of having an additional...
Very good.
...engineering party involved in this, so.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. I'll just offer a further comment. This individual really was very involved with the task force process and brought important discussion to the table, and so I agree. I think this is a good opportunity to bring an additional viewpoint, but also one that has some supporting background to the table. And I think you're right, Clay County has not had an engineer at the table, and I know that different entities are paying for those engineering services. And I think that if this can help us move towards a resolution, I think it is an important step.
And Madam Chair, two additional contacts I made on this was with our county engineer, Dave Overbow. He knows the individual, feels that he's a very outstanding engineer. And I also visited with Jenny Smirza, our legal counsel, in regards to the process, and she is okay with that as well. I'll go on to speak for them, but that was the summary of our conversation.
Great.
Question on, I know this committee has been dragging on, what if this drags out a long time, or is this, it says not to exceed $15,000, but I know how the diversion's been going lately. I mean, I support doing this, but what if this drags out for, or is there a limit on the time that we're going to have to have this done, and that's how much money we'll spend? But if it drags out over a year, we're going to come back and say, "No, I guess we need 20 or 30..."
It's actually why we're doing it, is to speed up the process. We're hopeful that if this person becomes involved, that it'll speed the process up and we'll be able to get things accomplished on a, in a timely manner that we have to do right now.
And I think it's important to know that because this individual has done a considerable amount of work specifically in the last six months because of the task force, a lot of their time has already been paid for. And so if we were bringing in an engineer with zero background, that cost would be absorbed quite quickly, but this helps, as Commissioner Whelan says, helps expedite the conversation. Commissioner Campbell?
Like I say, I have support, but I just wanted to understand it.
Commissioner Gross, part of the answer to your question is, there's been a lot of work done recently by the TAG group. That's the, you know, that's the technical advisory group. And also, there's been a policy group that's been put together, which has representatives of the diversion authority, the Army Corps, the DNR, and the JAPA, which is the joint powers group from, that's been opposed to this. And the, I think what we're looking for here is the policy group, and it's actually been a recommendation by Governor Dayton and by the DNR to establish that and to get that going. And I think they're, we're not, this isn't going to be opening up a whole bunch of new options. I think, you know, that even the task force itself had gone through and eliminated a lot of those. So the whole point of this is to move this thing along quickly, as opposed to dragging it out, so.
Well, like I say, I agree with the thing, but it's just, what if someone else says, "Okay, now I want to pay my services too," and stuff? I mean, now we're paying for engineering services. Probably there's someone else that wants to, I don't know who, but someone else says, "I want to get paid $20,000 for what I do," you know?
Well, then they'll have to bring that up with the diversion authority.
And I think, and I really do think that's a valid concern. And, you know, I even asked Brian that, you know, how quickly this will be absorbed. I, you know, it's, there are unknowns clearly in the conversation, but this is something that all parties thought would be a good person to bring to the table. And if you follow the diversion authority, it's not been something that all parties can agree, specifically even on this board, that is a good idea. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that his expertise will weigh positively into the discussion. And I think just for clarification, I had asked you where the funds were coming from this?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, we will have to take it out of reserves.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dara. We have an update on the Housing Redevelopment Authority and the reappointment of Les Baki to the HRA board. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. And I promise, I'm not here to ask for any money, and I'll try and go quickly. I have two business items that I would like for you guys to address. The first would be the reappointment of Les Baki. He's completed his first five-year term. According to the HRA bylaws, Commissioners are eligible for up to three five-year terms, but they are appointed by the Clay County Commission.
And, and he's...
He is willing to continue to serve, yes. And our board, the HRA board, has recommended to the Commission that he continue to serve.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Les Baki, too.
We have a motion to approve the reappointment?
I'll second it.
And a second? And discussion?
I just want to make, he still is a resident of Clay County.
Yes, we confirm that.
All right.
He is snowbirding, and we made sure that his residency is still established in Clay County.
All right, so good clarification. That's important. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And the second business item is permission to accept the environmental review for our reroofing project in Holly that has been prepared for our staff. And it is, the Clay County is the responsible entity, according to federal law, for HUD environmental reviews. They have become much more particular about what Holly's getting in a full environmental review. Not as much as the diversion, though, I can promise you that. So what we need are, one, approval of the environmental review that we have prepared on behalf, and if anybody would like to see the supporting documents, they are available, and they would also be available at our office. And second, permission to go ahead and publish on behalf of Clay County, a notice of intent to request release of funds. If you would like to see that, I have that available, but it is published in the name of Clay County. I had a conversation with the county administrator and the assistant county attorney to make sure that we would be in compliance with all the publishing criteria for that. And then part three is if we receive no negative comments from the public to approve the chairperson to sign off on the notice of release for funds and the certification that this has been completed. And it's to reroof two duplexes in Holly. We don't think that there will be a major environmental impact in any way, or even a slight environmental impact.
Jenny, is it an issue if we act on this because it's not on the agenda?
It is.
Okay. Questions for Dara? Well, she needs action, so what...
Okay, I'll approve.
Make a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Just, item of note, we've had a small cities meeting last fall with this board and then the representatives from the smaller cities, and an issue in Holly had come up in regards to some things, and I think you've addressed that. But just so you know, we're trying to get a date together for that, and I think that because of your presence in those other cities, that it might be an evening of interest for you, if they have any questions. So we'll just add you on to that invitation as well, just so you know.
We'd be very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you for your work. And thank you to Les for his service.
If I could just do a brief update, speaking of small cities, one of the programs that we have administered on behalf of Clay County in the past and currently on behalf of the city of Barnesville is the deed-funded small cities redevelopment program, where we have rehabilitated single-family rental commercial properties. And I always like to give you guys an update, because this is the one area that we have levied under the HRA levy, countywide. We levied in 2008 for $100,000, 2010 for $100,000, and 2013 for $190,000. Though 13 levy covered some other areas as well. But I'm happy to say that the $390,000 that we have levied total in our forty-some year existence has generated over $3 million in additional investments into communities around Clay County, that we have been able to leverage about $8.4 for, $8.40 for every dollar of levy funds. And I just always like to tell you, especially when I'm not here asking for any more money, just to keep it in the back of your mind.
No, that's great. And for our point of reference, looking to the horizon, are you seeing any future levies?
Not at this specific point. I would guess that sometime in the horizon, the answer is yes. We are going to, we've been asked by the city of Saban to submit an application on their behalf to this round. We've been invited to submit a full application, is what they call it, at the end of February. And Commissioner Campbell, I believe, will appreciate this, that we have generated enough funds and repaid loans from our prior activities, that we will not need to request state levy for this round of the application. He made us promise that we would get some money back eventually, and I just want to make sure you know we were actually doing that, so. So we're really excited to be able to do that, because it's a small project, we're just looking at doing 10 homes, but in a city of Saban, that will make a significant impact.
Absolutely.
So, and then just briefly, updates that we did accept the transfer of the Housing Choice Voucher Section 8 program from the city of Moherhead, the housing authority there, the Moherhead Public Housing Agency, on July 1st of the past year. They only administered 95 vouchers. We administered 360. So our boards met, staff met, it was just much more cost-effective to make that transition, and we've continued to be, to figure out ways we can operate more cheaply. And then finally, the project we've been doing in conjunction with Clay County Social Services, which is, used to be referred to as group residential housing, the state changed the name to housing supports, but they still call it group residential housing. But we've partnered with five other service providers and Clay County to use this program, which is a housing supports program with services, primarily for people who have significant mental health issues, who have been long-term homeless, to rent units out in the private community and receive supportive services. To date, we have 36 active folks living in their units and doing pretty well, and those are all state funds. Clay County obviously contributes in the way of the staff time that it takes to process the applications and get that delivered to the state. So we've been really excited about the cooperation. Currently Summit Guidance Center, Lakeland Mental Health, Lakes and Purrays Community Action, Dorothy Day House of Hospitality, Presentation Partners in Housing, and the HRA are all serving those folks, so just wanted to give you that brief update and answer any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions? Thank you very much for your work and for your presence.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move into the Highway Department items. Our engineer, Dave Overbow, is here.
Good morning, Matt.
All right, we'll start with your agenda item number one, which is the approval of the agreement with BNSF for the Glendon Urban Reconstruct Project.
Yeah, Eric's been doing a lot of work with this. We do got a crossing there in the city of Glendon, so in order to do any work within there right away, you need to follow their rules and jump through their hoops. I believe this is a 60-page document, so we, there's a, there's an agreement fee, there is going to be a temporary construction easement fee. It'll all be split according to our MOU with the city of Glendon, so it won't be fully funded by the county. But I believe it's going to be around the range of around $16,000 or between $16,000 and $17,000. We'd like to get approval on this agreement so we can move forward. We've only got one additional easement to get signed, and then we can move forward with the right-of-way certificate approval through MINDOT. We're currently down at the Federal Aid Plan Review Area down in St. Paul, so we literally could be within a few weeks away from advertising. I believe we did come to the board and get permission to advertise once all the documents are ready to go, so I'm hoping to get this thing in the paper as quick as we can.
Have you had discussions regarding that easement? Are you not starting?
Oh, yes. Yeah, no, no, quite a few different times. The group was down in Frisco, so that delayed us a little bit, and now they're down in Mexico. So we're hoping to get them corralled up and...
You've got a good schedule.
I know. Maybe I'll have to follow them on these trips.
Charge it to them.
Yeah.
All right. What are the board's wishes on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the agreement with BNSF.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gross, that's fine.
Is the BNSF involved at all?
Very involved. In fact, the way it works, you basically, they have to, they have to approve and do all the work within their right-of-way, so the actual crossing work will be done by them and their contractors, and then they send us a bill. So it's, you know, very little.
They didn't pay for that. We paid for the thing.
Yeah, on top of the agreement, on top of the easement, and it's very costly working with the railroad on projects like this. It's going to be nice when it's all said and done. There is also a no quiet, or a quiet zone being done by the city of Glendon that's 100% funded by the city, so they're doing some work on that. We're doing some of the work, like the raised median, since we're tearing the roadway up. They will put that two feet wide, six inch high median, as well as the gates, and then the pedestrian maze that comes through there. So some of that work will be included in our project, and according to the engineer's estimate, it's broken down, so any quiet zone improvements are fully funded by the city.
Is the city of Glendon aware of this, too, then?
Oh, yeah.
That there will be a good more funds available?
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the county rock bids, the sale of the rock at the Felton pit.
Yeah, we ended up having, we put together a little map, and it had eight different zones on there. Two of the zones were significantly larger than the other zones, and as a result, one contractor was very interested in those. They did a lot more, I guess, than I thought that the bids would come out at. So Coast Materials ended up bidding $42,680 for zone number, I think it's number five, and then $28,600 for zone seven, for a total of $71,280. I believe they do plan on crushing that down and using it for possibly the ready-mix, but I'm not exactly sure. That was kind of one of the things that I had heard early on from that group.
Just a comment quickly, is that going, the crushing going to happen at our pit?
It very well could be, yes.
And I think that was part of my question in the discussion, is because if they did bring a crusher in, does that, that change the landscape in terms of how we communicated this with neighbors?
No, no, it shouldn't. Like you said, there's normal crushing going on there all the time. There isn't any neighbors anywhere real close to this, so I don't foresee any problems with how they plan on...
And in terms of the amount of time, then, that will be spent, and obviously, there's a significant amount of truckloads, and so there's a difference in time loading and coming out, but if you have a crusher there, they're on site more, that increases our liability, though, doesn't it?
Well, they've got insurance, and they've got, we'll have a contract, you know, and that sort of thing with them, so I don't, I don't see how it's any different, I guess, than the current work that's going out there. They also, Turner Santa Gravel is one of our main contractors in this pit. He produces material for Clay County as well... He produces material for Clay County as well as townships, so he's in and out of this pit pretty much all, the whole entire season, so. At least, I don't know, Jenny, do you feel like you've got any liability issues or any different than any other year, or?
Well, I mean, they always exist, so we can't be fooled that, you know, we're completely insulated, but I think, as, as Dave mentioned, you know, we'll have the contract with them for operations and they will, part of that will require them to be properly insured, so I think we will mitigate that liability as best we can. And, and the positive here is that material gets removed and it's material that we want it to be removed so that we could further operate that pit to our advantage, so. But I think, I think it's a risk in contemplation of the benefits and the risks, it's advisable.
The other, the other high bidder, I guess, for the other zones was actually Aguirre Industries. Since they only received high bids on the smaller piles, they decided to rescind their bid. Next high bidder, number two, was Olson Gravel Incorporated, and I did speak with them and they were willing to remove zones, I believe it's one, two, three, four, six, and eight, and their, their bid, combined bid for that was $4,246.
Commissioner Campbell?
I have approval of the high bid from Coast Materials for zones five and seven and from Olson Gravel for zones one through four and six and eight.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I just, I do have one comment. I never thought we could sell rock for that much money.
You can go out and pick rock again.
It is really, thank you for doing that, Dave, that was a good project.
It's going to clean the area up quite a bit as well as it's significant value there and within five to seven years, we're going to have piles just real similar to that again, so it might lead to a precedent, we do this every five to seven years.
We should almost haul some rock in for that. I think the Glaciers already did that.
All right, we'll move into agenda item number three, the approval to sell the old copy machine.
On December 23rd, we brought in bids for our January purchase of our new copy machine. Our past practice has been to do this every five years. What I do is I do increase the line item for that unit every five years and then it goes back down to a normal operating number for this equipment, but I thought maybe we would have an option to try to repurpose this within the county. I've sent out some emails at the management committee meeting, I handed out some pictures, and it doesn't seem like there's any need right now in any other department, so I guess I'd like to get permission to sell this piece of equipment. I'm hoping to get somewhere between $800 and $1,000. I've looked online for similar models to see what they're getting. They're as low as 600, I've seen, and I've seen as high as 2,000 or more. I believe there's only a couple hundred thousand copies, which would be like equivalent to miles on a car, so there's not like millions of copies on this thing and I think it would be a good copier for several different type businesses or, I've checked with our local church in Door to see if they're interested, and I think they just bought one. I don't know, Frank, if, sounded like Dave, anyway, I'm not, not really, I'm chasing leads now, but I'm not having a lot of luck, so I'd like to get permission to sell it, I don't think we need it.
We have a motion to approve the sale?
Second.
Or advertised sale, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thanks.
We'll move into our committee reports and as a reminder, it's been two weeks since our last meeting. Commissioner Campbell, would you like to start?
Yes, on the January 24th, we had a Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting in Purim and we went over the revenues and expenditures and I got the fortunate task of being elected chair for this year of that organization. Congratulations. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for your service.
And then, we did discuss shortfalls and deliveries and there was some concerns regarding deliveries and, and then one county was requesting the fact that we had revenues over expenditures previous year and that there was some not, there were some issues with the price per ton that different counties were paying and so there was a request there, which then required us to have a special budget meeting the following week. But before I get into that, I'll follow my order here. I came back that day and we had an executive search committee meeting for the diversion authority and that was kind of establishing the new parameters for what an executive director position would be and so we're, we came, come closer to determining what that will be and, and a timeline for that. The next day, we had our solid waste advisory group here in town and I was, I had to be in and out of that meeting for some various reasons, but Commissioner Whalen was able to present to Mandy and Dick from Ace Hardware, the, the recycler of the year award and well-deserved. They do an awful lot for, for Clay County in terms of, of that and we got various updates from the landfill, recycling update, household house waste updates, and Kirk's update as the director. I think we were all at the intergovernmental retreat, right, on the 26th, and that went very well and I, I just want to comment that Chelsea, who was there on that opioid panel, not to, not to say that there was one person that stuck out more than the others, but she was the, in my mind, she was the keynote speaker of the day in what she had gone through and, and it proves that people who go through those problems can turn things around and I was really impressed with, with that. Then on, we had a PIC meeting on the 30th and primarily, we talked about the jail staffing plan moving forward and we, that, we still have some issues there yet to work out and so we will be continuing that. And then, as I mentioned, then I went back to Purim on the 31st for that operations meeting and budget meeting. And it was that day, we also learned that there was some more significant problems with the current burner, it was potentially going to fall apart and so I think they're, they're trying to put a band-aid together that because we're, the goal is, is in March to replace that. Anyway, that's a million-dollar fix that we've been waiting to do. We went over plant manager responsibilities and how we're going to reconcile contracts and the amount of tons that that facility can produce annually. So, it ended up being quite a, it started off as quite a, quite a conflict amongst some of our member counties and by the end of the day, we came to some solutions that's going to be going forward. So, I think that's going to turn out good. On Thursday morning, February 1st, we had our Clay County Joint Powers Committee meeting and we basically did a recap of the intergovernmental retreat. That same day then, we had a special meeting of the diversion authority and primarily encompassed dealing with items that are still in litigation and so that's, that was the extent of that meeting. Then yesterday, we had our semi-monthly or bi-weekly jail construction meeting and all continues to go well there and I know Brian will maybe give a little bit more in-depth on, on his report as to what's going on there, but all, there was no surprises again, there's no, no more additional change orders coming through and all's going well and, and then of course, this morning, we were at the eggs and issues and got an update from the mayors on, on the, where the diversion project stands today. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On Friday, the 26th, I attended the joint powers retreat along with the other commissioners at the Courtyard by Marriott and we heard the panel discussion about the opioid crisis and how it's being dealt with. And Thursday, the 1st of February, I attended the joint power committee at the Independent School District 152 Meeting Room along with Commissioner Campbell and Mr. Berg and we discussed the results in the aftermath of the joint powers retreat, which had taken place before. On Monday, the 5th of February, I attended the MetroCog Policy Board meeting along with Commissioner Mojo and we, they discussed the new executive director position and we got updates on that. And then, of course, today, we were all at the eggs and issues over at the Courtyard by Marriott with which the diversion task force was discussed by the mayors and by the panel.
Thank you, Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Girls?
Hey. Yes, I too was at the intergovernmental retreat, which we talked about and in addition to what Ben said, you know, I really would compliment Peyton Mester for the, he did a great job of moderating that retreat, you know, and kept it going and just, I just think, I don't know whether we recognize it or not, whatever, but I think he did a good job on, on keeping that program going. And it was a good program. Then on Monday, the 29th, I had Heartland Trail. There, we had Senator Ekin, Representative Lean there, and we discussed with them as far as asking for money. We're pre-designing in a bonding bill this year and they're going to ask, normally before we had to ask for 200,000, now they're looking at asking for 500,000 for getting the trail hopefully going and getting some money for it, you know, but that's, that's what the plan is right now. And also, we're going to need a letter of support for funding this and I think that's coming up next week possibly, or have we, have we gotten anything on that yet for funding that?
I'm not sure on that.
I think they want a letter of support from all of the...
Yeah, they do. I'll have to thank, I'll check that.
I thought he had forwarded, I thought Dan had forwarded something to you yet.
You know, I think he has, yes.
Okay.
He had sent an email and, I'm not, did you get the copy?
It's coming to me now, yes.
Yeah, I think we need to do that fairly quick.
Yes, that's right.
Make sure it gets on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought for next week that we should have that taken care of, okay. Then on Tuesday, Thursday, excuse me, last, last Thursday, I toured Law Enforcement Center and the Correctional Facility and I was impressed, it's very, they're coming along good and it's going to be a good facility to serve our residents of Clay County and then it's just, I think we can do it more efficiently, we can do it better, and then they want to give them, you know, we're going to give them the right tools to do their job, you know, and it's just going to be a good, good facility to do that, so it's just, I was impressed with that, what was all done there. That was my first opportunity to go through that thing and it's a good tour. Then yesterday, had the MRC meeting that Grant and I attended. We pretty much went through, which we've done several times already, with priorities for the legislature, what are our priorities and Broad Van was one of them, you know, and then they came up with a couple other ones, percentage of total monthly mortgage registry and deed tax collection retained by counties, which I don't fully understand yet, but, but that's one of the things that some counties are concerned with. They're looking at also as private land is being bought up by an Asia Conservatory, by the DNR, and they want something former, right now, we get a letter saying that this was transferred, you know, this was, but they want a letter before negotiations. I don't think, I don't know, we can't really stop it, you know, but it's just some of the counties, I guess, want prior notification when they're going to sell it to somebody, but I don't know if they can stop it anyway, but...
You know, I, that's one of AMC's platforms as well, is to encourage the, the counties already receive letters when that is happening and so just to add sending it to the township, but I think Ryan and I have talked about automatically sending it, forwarding it to them when we receive anything like that, so it's a good point.
Yeah. And then the last thing they're going to do, work on, to pay landowners for sub, for acquisitions, you know, so that's another, another priority they're working on, so. Then this morning, of course, I was at the chamber thing too, so those were my meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Girls. Commissioner Whalen?
Well, I think most of the things I had been going over, Prairie Lakes, I was at, Kevin reported on that and our solid waste advisory committee and it was nice to give that recycler of the year award, Ace Hardware from Moorhead, I think they were pretty proud to get that award and it got pretty good coverage too from the media, which was nice to see. And closed diversion authority meeting on litigation, Kevin talked about that. Let's see, the Heartland Trail, Frank talked about that and I think they're hopeful we might get some bonding money this year for that, but like I always tell Frank, the diversion's a cakewalk compared to the Heartland Trail issue, so I mean, blood control is going to get money before the bike project is. Let's see, jail construction, we had that meeting yesterday and I think one of the things they brought up, all the brickwork's supposed to be done by the end of the month, which I thought was going to, pretty, on the law enforcement center, so that's, that's already looking pretty impressive and it'll be nice when that's done, so. And Kevin and I talked about, we need to have tours for some of the people that helped us get to the point where we're at with that, some of the business people in town and maybe we can make some arrangements for that later in the month, early March, so. And I think we had MRC yesterday, Frank brought up a couple of the main priorities were supporting AMC on bonding money for mental health facilities in the state and I think that's, that's a major issue for everybody around the state, so hopefully that'll get some traction this year. And then also bonding money for roads and bridges, so. And I think that was it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Whalen.
I had one more question.
Commissioner Girls?
On this correctional facility, are we going to do tours? Is that in the plan at all? You know, I think it's important for our citizens to know that this isn't just a great elaborate place, this is just bare facilities for housing prisoners and the programs that we're going to be running there, you know, and that's, that's what I got out of the thing, that, you know, it's going to be a good place. I mean, it looks good and stuff like that, so it's, I think people should know that.
I, you know, in answer to that, I think what, what we'll be looking at is, as it gets closer to completion, for example, in the, in the correctional facility before it is open, we, we will be doing some public opportunities for the public to go in and, and review it, but I, at this point, it's, it's been pretty much more for the elected people and, and then also the people who served, you know, the, the people outside the public from the private area that served on the construction committee meetings, they're the ones who are touring it now. They do, there are some opportunities for groups to go through, Brian, right now, to tour. We, we need to be careful there that we don't get in the way, but there will be an opportunity for the general public to also have...
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do it now because they would just get in the way and stuff like that, but I think it's important for our citizens to know that this is not a elaborate place, this is just a jail, I mean, a correctional facility.
And one of the other things that, that I've suggested that we're going to probably do in the near future is a media tour so that the media can go in and they can, you know, do some reports that can get out there, that can show what you're talking about too, that can get out there to all the different news agencies and...
I guess if we could even do a video tour, put it on the website somehow, you know, that, that they can view it, you know, because I think, like I say...
I think that's a really good proposal. I, you know, I think while it's important to get people in there, it also holds up construction and when that happens...
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do it now.
All right, last, two weeks ago, we had our planning commission, our January...
All right, uh, last, two weeks ago, uh, we had our planning commission, our January Planning Commission meeting. We, uh, recommended the reappointment of Amos Behr to another three-year term, which we approved this morning. We had board elections, uh, and talked a little bit about the renewable energy ordinance in regards to the larger solar farms that I had talked about the week prior, so we've got a couple more proposals for looking at, uh, wording, and then talked about the proposed ordinance amendment. Uh, let's see. I then had a Lakes and Prairies meeting as well. We did board elections and, uh, approved a significant amount of, of mini-grant applications, uh, multi-hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants, so hopefully we can get some of those, those do good work in the county. I had the PIC or IGR retreat. I am appreciative of Dilworth for hosting the Joint Powers in the last year, and now the schools will do that. Felt it was a, a good opportunity for networking. There were a good amount of county departments present in that, and that was, that was good to see. Uh, Commissioner Campbell reported on the, the PIC committee meeting that we had. You know, we, we just need to fine tune. We have all, um, had this understanding that obviously the buildings will require increased staffing, but now it's the time where we really need to hammer out the details, and so that conversation is ongoing, but I appreciate the, the teamwork between HR and the Sheriff's Office and the jail in regards to that. I, uh, have obviously been in the midst of inner MetroCog Executive Director interviews, so, uh, full day last week was spent on final interviews with three candidates. Uh, all the entities from MetroCog were represented, which was good. And then yesterday, as Commissioner Haney said, we did extend a contingent offer based on pre-employment screening to an individual from the East Coast, so we're waiting to hear that, uh, but either way, we have some really good talent in the area, so that was exciting to see. And then this morning, uh, did have the Eggs and Issues, and so appreciate the presence of two of our commissioners on that board, and hopeful the conversation will be fruitful going forward. Commissioner, or Brian Berg, Commissioner Berg. Sorry, Colonel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as you know, and, and you guys have reported on, or you folks have reported on, is the fact that it was two weeks since last meeting, so I, I got a pretty long list here, but I'll go through it quickly. Uh, we, uh, we talked, it's already been talked about, uh, I had some additional meetings with the Sheriff's Office in regards to jail staffing, and talked about that. I dealt with some personnel issues during the two-week period of time. That's always ongoing. Um, the, we've had two or three meetings in regards to the remodeling project with the juvenile center, and not necessarily with the juvenile center design and different things, but there's, as, as you are well aware of, there's several other things that need to happen in conjunction with that, so they have to fall in place too. So, um, those, those are happening as well. Uh, met with the, with the Madam Chair, uh, over some county projects and, and different things. Uh, a few things we talked about. I attended the solid waste meeting for most of the meeting, uh, the last Thursday morning, and, um, we have, I met with all of the personnel, or we met with all of the personnel in, in the assessor's office in planning and zoning, and I think that is all moved down now, and just wanted to comment on the second floor is moving along very, very well. You've got such a good, uh, crew in your, in your buildings and grounds that works with the staff here, and the staff really has cooperated with that other, I mean, if you were to try to move a floor around like that and have it carpeted, things you'd have, you could have a lot of controversy and things, and everybody's just been really, really, really good to, to work with on that. I can't say enough about that. I attended the intergovernmental retreat that's been talked about plenty. Uh, very, I thought it was a very good program. Um, we also had joint PA, uh, Joint Powers meeting, uh, that next Thursday, and Commissioner Haney's already reported on that, with new hire orientation, and I always attend that about forty-five minutes or so, I guess it was along on this one, and quite a group of them. Um, another juvenile detention meeting with Steve in regards to some issues there. Um, I had a conference call in regards to the school board, uh, search for their new superintendent. I know I forwarded that to all two of the commissioners as well, if you'd wanted any put in that, input into that, and, uh, they followed up with a, with a fifteen, twenty-minute conference call with me in regards to it. Um, did coordinate two, uh, construction tours, and, uh, that was mostly city officials. Commissioner Gross attended that. Uh, I think at least the mayor and four of the city, uh, council members, uh, attended that, plus some staff that, uh, worked on it and that are going to be occupying it. Um, so I thought it went well. Um, the, the, there's, uh, another issue that, um, dealt with, the, an incident that we had occurred in the jail last summer, and, and, uh, we're having some discussion with, uh, MCIT in regards to, to that as well, so we had a pretty extensive meeting on that. A diversion board meeting, I attended that. Uh, then the next morning, we had a, a congressional delegation, uh, had an update for them. None of the, the members were there, but their staff, all of their staff were, were there. Uh, kinda brought them up to speed on that. Uh, I'm, I'm attending this FEMA training, uh, this week. Um, Brian Green encouraged, uh, me to attend that, and he assured me that I didn't have to be there for every minute, so, um, that's why I'm here today, and I'll go back this afternoon or tomorrow, in and out. Uh, we had the construction meeting Monday afternoon, and, and, yeah, the, uh, I, if you still have the, the entire schedule that I handed out probably three, four weeks ago, I think that identifies it best. When we go into these, um, Jeff Reed, the, the overall manager of the site, the site manager, goes through that and talks about the, the, what is happening and what's gonna happen for the next three weeks and that, and it, it's just following true to, true to form on that with, uh, very few hiccups, uh, and if they've got some hiccups as far as scheduling, getting something in, you know, they have, uh, he said that the, the, the brick, on the exterior brick, that they had eighteen people underneath those cover the other day, so they're moving along really, really well. And of course, a lot of things have to coordinate, as you saw, Commissioner Gross, when you were in there. There's a beehive going on in there, and all those functions have to be coordinated, and, and, uh, they let us know if there's trouble, and it's just, it's really going, really well. Uh, we did have a meeting with, uh, construction engineers and the architect for the juvenile center, and, and trying to refine some costs, and that, because we're gonna bring that to the board for a preliminary discussion, uh, very soon. Uh, when did we say? Uh, the 13th? That would, that would be next week. We'll, we'll be talking a little more about that. Um, and hopefully, um, show you that, you know, how we can, can finance that and move forward, because we'll be looking at a guaranteed maximum price pretty soon on that. Um, the, uh, I, I just wanna jump back, because you already heard me on it, but the, the diversion board meeting, and then we went in special session, and I guess I was really, really pleased with our representatives on, on that, that we stepped up and, and moved it forward, because we had an hour, hour and a half discussion, and it wasn't going anywhere. In fact, it was going downhill. And, and, uh, I'm, I'm just really glad you, you spoke up and, and moved that forward. It takes one more piece out of the puzzle. Um, oh, this morning, or yesterday afternoon, Cass County met on their second reading of the ordinance that was, they were needing to pass to, for the 2.5 million dollars. Uh, Robert Wilson, their county administrator, brought that over this morning, uh, and, uh, we'll bring that before the board next week for your chair's, uh, signature on the 2.5 million dollars. So, uh, all eleven counties are on board. Uh, Cass has got the 2.5 on the table, um, so everything is just really falling into place on that as well. So, um, talk about second floor. I, I think that's, that's it, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. We're all in quite with you, Jenny, do you have?
Nothing.
Colleen?
Thank you.
Uh, we are adjourned.